One nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the water sewer commissioners meeting. Select board meeting will follow. First item on the agenda is citizens comments. If there was someone here that would like to speak regarding an issue that is not on the agenda regarding water and sewer, now would be the time to do so. Are there any citizens comments? Hearing done, we'll go right on to the water department budget and we have Jeff Holden here, the head of the water and sewer department to help us along with this. And Julie, can you take us through also?
Okay. So, water budget, obviously, and Jeff can go into more detail. Several items are up, which is no surprise. You will, the one thing I do want to point out, well, two things. Number one, you are going to see a grant expense, grant line expense. That is for the work that we're doing. Those grant loan combinations, this one is for the secondary well location. You'll also see it in the sewer line. Those will balance themselves out. They just don't do it within the same year. But water wastewater is an enterprise fund, so it rolls. It's not like the general fund. So, we don't worry too much about that. We'll watch in trend and make sure that we're, those are balancing out at some point. The other thing to note, I'm going to say the same thing during sewer. It's going to appear that we're budgeting a deficit. In theory, we are. But that is because as we gradually start to increase our revenue line with increased billing, we've decided that you're doing that over a two-year period. Next year, that should come up and we should balance. But we're going to have a year where it's just going to look a little funky. So, those are the, I mean, Jeff can go into the details about why specific lines are up dramatically. He can talk about costs for mostly chemicals and those types of things.
Jeff?
Well, I might just start at the top here. Labor, you can see that's increased, but what we finally did, it used to be, water was totally separate, but we've, all the employees at water and wastewater, our salaries are split in two different departments equally now, which I feel better about. And it's up also because we've just hired on a fourth person. We lost one person a couple of months ago. I don't know exactly what time it was, but this, I'm feeling very encouraged about this new employee because he's a young kid and he's very excited about it. He's smart and he seems to have the right work ethic. He doesn't have any knowledge about it, but I think, you know, we can train him the way we want him to work. So, I think it's probably an asset and it's, he's interested in a career and he's a Chester resident. He grew up here and graduated here. So, that's what I'm hoping for is to get people in here that'll stay here when I retire, if I get around to retiring in a couple of years here. But I want people that will stay and take care of these departments that I've spent so much time working on. Like Julie said, the chemicals has gone crazy.
Hey Jeff, can I ask you a question?
Yep.
Sorry to interrupt, but I noticed that the labor costs for the water budget and the payroll costs for the water, for the sewer budget are identical. Is that?
Yeah, that's because we're.
We take all four salaries, total them, divide by two.
Okay, so what we're seeing here, then the total budget, payroll budget for water and sewer would be?
Combine those.
What, 260,000?
Basically, yes.
Okay.
But that's because we require everybody, you know, to be certified in both departments and they're supposed to be able to do the jobs in both departments.
But we have to keep water separate from sewer because they are enterprises.
Yeah, no, I just was, I was curious about.
Just the cleanest way to do it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Same thing with medical insurance.
What's that?
Same thing with the medical insurance line, any of the benefit lines.
Okay, thank you.
Chemicals, you were talking about chemicals.
Yeah, chemicals, they've gone crazy. At the beginning of this year, they were like $23 for my soda ash. I get it in a powder form in a bag, a 50-pound bag, and the beginning of this year is like $23, $24. It's now $34 a bag. And it doesn't, I've been hitting all the distributors and stuff and it doesn't seem like that's going to give any, at all this year or anywhere in the near future because there's, that's just the way they can get it from their distributors. So, it's, that's up considerable. Oh, and the pumps, rebuilding pumps and motors, I'm trying to get them all so that we have redundancy. We at least have one spare motor for whatever pump station or the tanks at the plant so that, because when one of those pumps goes down, you know, you run at half capacity and if we have weather like we've had, we need both pumps. So, we have one that we can slide right in there. Most of them are, all of our pumps are on slide rail system, so we just, we can pull them out, slide one in and just rewire in the next one. But I think I only have one new backup motor and all the rest are rebuilt ones, which I think is a lot more cost effective because the older Gould pumps were built better if I was, I'm concerned anyway. But, so, we're trying to keep the redundancy going, especially when, excuse me, our usage in our water production is continually going up. And a lot of that's not from, well, I guess some of the businesses in town, but most of it's residential stuff. We've gone, my daily average was like 145,000 a day. It's now over 200,000 a day.
That's gallons?
Yes. So, that's water production and then also the water that we treat coming in the plant is increased that amount, our like amount.
Do those two numbers, the water coming into the system and going out of the system, are they close to being the same?
No, because we, especially like with this last rain event, we're permit, our permit is 175,000 gallons a day. Flood stage is 500,000 gallons a day.
They're able to live on this pedestal of being marginalized by being gay, but the rest of their lives have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
In flood stage is 500,000 gallons a day, but the other day we had like 650,000 going through that we were able to record. Some of them went through that couldn't come up in the headworks and out the door that wasn't recorded. So, we have, we had a lot of water in this last rain event and that was three and three-quarter inches in 18 hours, so, that we had. And I will say again that, and I hope the state's listening, A and R, that because we, I'm convinced that because we were able to clean that river out down there up north of the plant this, earlier this year, that that saved us from having a major flood going through the plant, you know, and through the buildings. We need to do more of that to help us out. I still have a problem with my outfall pipe because it's, the riverbed has come up and the outfall pipe is actually below, equal to or below the bottom of the river, so I can't pump out as much as I need to. But that's, we got a project in the works to get that brought up, so that won't be restricted like it is now.
So, you have to move the pipe? Are they going to let you dredge the river a little bit?
We did that, we dredged it earlier this year. And then one of these last two rain events, actually, it just all filled in and plugged up again. So, I'm going to have to go down and find the pipe, put an elbow in and bring it up a little bit and put a screen on the top and, but just try to get it up into where the water's flowing and not in the bottom where it fills in, but.
So, Jeff, during the rainstorms and the events like that, where does the water infiltrate from? Storm drains that are tied into the system?
Manholes, a lot of manholes on the streets and, but we still have many, many sump pumps in this town that are pumped directly into the system. It's technically, Vermont law is not allowed, but I've seen it where some people, they try to comply, they pump it out of the house, it goes back in their basement, you know, it's just a vicious circle and because there's no good storm drain system where they're at to get rid of the water. And until we can correct that, we're still going to have a lot of that problem. I can remember years ago, we had a, we did a water main, we fixed a manhole and cavata circle because we were getting a lot of infiltration and basically found an underground spring that was right around the manhole. And we bitched, thanged it and sealed it all, but that stopped 80,000 gallons a day just going in that one manhole, so. We do have work to do there. We've been working with the engineers, hopefully be getting a report pretty soon on what we're going to be able to do about a secondary well, a redundant well. And hopefully, we can get that done this year in the water, water end of it. I know you can look at the numbers where, and I asked Julie about this and she made me feel a little better about it, but I was worried about, I don't know how I get 43,000 to the minus in the water department. I very seldom and I, and my over budget. And then she explained to me that the grant expense, which money we have to spend prior to getting the money from the state, has to come out of these. And we're only 43,000 in the hole at the end, but the grant expense is 113,000 plus that we will eventually be getting back. So, we're, we're still pretty good.
And when you, and when we look at numbers like that, I think these both, these departments have a pretty good fund balance, don't they?
Yes.
So, it's not like we're in the hole 43,000. It's just the fund balance is dropping down a little bit to cover for this year. And then with the increases coming, we should be able to recoup that.
I've tried very hard over the years to make sure that any money that we spent is, is going to help us in the future for our costs, you know, it's going to be more cost productive to spend that money that way, you know. So.
But I think it's a good plan that you have about the spare parts happening and because with all the supply chain issues, if you had to order something for the department, pumps, controls, or whatever it might be, it's weeks out sometimes.
Yeah, it's months. In fact, one pump that I waited for was almost a year and a half. And that kind of convinced me that I need to have something on hand. So, it's, some of them are getting better. I found another supplier for rebuilding my pumps, that they do better. They're anywhere from six weeks to three months, which is a lot better than a year out. So, but we're trying to stay ahead of that. And I spoke to Julie the other day, well, down the wastewater plant, about having a spare effluent pump. It's probably the only infrastructure where I don't have a spare pump to go in there. And those effluent pumps have been running around the clock during events like we've had recently, so I don't want it to quit and then only trying to be doing on half of my capacity, so. Yeah, there's a few other line items like, well, I put in for, to replace my lawn tractor. That thing is like, it's almost 20 years old. I'm getting exactly the same thing because that tractor's done a hell of a job. And it allows me to mow like up to the big tank, that bank. That, I can do it with that type of tractor, but I can't with the other smaller tractor that I have because it's just not safe. And you can't, you can't do it by, by foot, by, with a push mower either, because it's just too steep. So, but I figure if we get that in there, then that should be good for another 20 years. And the next big item I'll need in a couple of, three years is probably a sewer, a wastewater truck. So. I don't think I have anything else that I want to say, unless you have any more questions, have any questions about anything?
Yeah, how are you doing on lead pipes?
Oh, we're actually pretty good. We just finished our lead pipe service line inventory.
Yep.
We only have about 12 that are questionable and it's not because they're lead, but it's because they're galvanized.
Oh, yep.
And because there may have been lead in there, they're requiring us to change the galvanized pipes to. So, we, as far as the lead goosenecks, in the last 25 years, we've, I've been involved in like 14 different water main replacement projects in this town. And that has made a huge difference on us being ahead of the game when it comes to this. We're probably farther ahead than most towns in this state. And we're in good shape for that. Like I said, there's, there's only 12 things that probably we're going to have to dig up.
Okay. Well, do you have money for that in this budget?
No. So, the lead, the lead service line inventory is all grant funded.
Right.
That's all through the state. They're, because we were in the loop to get the inventory 100% funded, projects identified through that inventory will also be funded.
Okay.
We needed to have our inventory done by October this year and then we have like a couple of years to, to get the replacements done or a plan in place, I think it is, to get the replacement done. And there's a grant for that as well. So, most of it's being paid for, but we just needed to get the work done, so.
Yep. When issues like that come up for repairs and stuff, I mean, they're replaced on, you know, if you come across it, it's always replaced at that time.
We have.
Once the hole is open.
Yeah.
That's part of it, too.
And probably we're going to have some work to do in the wastewater system. We just finished an asset management thing with a camera, we cleaned and camered all of our lines and we found, they found a couple of spots where I got infiltration that I had no clue that I had it in there. And it's, it's basically, it's actually in some of the newer sections. That's why I wasn't, I was surprised by it. But soon as we get that report and get, so we can view the camera work and figure out exactly where the problems are, we can start working on that some, this summer, too. If we can get the infiltration out, it'll cut down on the amounts that we have to pump and process, so.
And that's on the newer stuff?
Yeah, like the end of.
Are they the scheduled, I mean, the PBC lines?
Plastic, yeah. Yep.
Is it coming in at joints or?
A lot of it's joints, yeah.
Okay.
And actually, we had, there's one area where there was more sump pumps in there that I didn't think there was sump pumps in there. And they were either put in since the last time I was in there, like 20 years ago when I replaced all the water meters. So, when I basically got to see all the basements and what was in there. But I think some of the stuff is, some of those sump pumps are more recent, so I hadn't had a reason to get in there and check that. And I mean, I'm actually fairly happy with the way the condition is, the system's in. I know I've been on Julie and we've been working on grants for the force main replacement because that's, and Peter and I have talked about, this pump station down here is going to be taking more volume in the future probably, and we've got to have a way to get rid of it. What we have is an old four-inch cast iron and I think that was put in early 70s or something, whenever that pump station was put in. And it comes all the way up through Depot Street from first avenue to the top of the hill. Well, being an unlined cast iron pipe, it built up a lot of barnacles and stuff. Plus, there was, I fixed at least four different spots in that line that had broke from movement or whatever. But still, with the barnacles and the stuff that the buildup inside the pipe has reduced our flow that we can put through it. So, we need to get it replaced before.
Were they, were they able to run the camera up that or they did not?
No, they couldn't. That was the problem, that was one of our problems. We couldn't even get the camera in the end of the pipe. We did get the jetter down farther than we normally then able to. I was only able to get it like 25 feet down the upper end and best septic came in and they, I guess they had a smaller jetter and they made it 200 feet. But, you know, that's, there's limited access into that force main. There's no clean outs or anything.
Yep.
So, that would be one thing that I would like to see done before I leave because it's, it's got a potential for being a big deal of.
If that goes, we lose a big section of town as far as the sewer department, I mean, as far as sewer outcomes.
Being able to pump it, so.
Right. Well, it needs to be coordinated with the Depot Street project because there's no sense in digging it up twice.
Well, I mean, the very first step is, we just, we have to get the, so, wastewater asset management plan.
Yep.
Next step is preliminary engineering work, that, and then the actual construction. So, that just unfortunately all takes time, but with a $900,000 project, we have to wait for funding, so.
Right.
It's one of those, we just.
Oh, come on, you could pin it on the railroad.
Please, please hold on.
You could pin it on the railroad again.
Please, just hold up, just hold up.
It's been going for a few years and it's still hanging in there, which is amazing because it seems like lately it's been more often than not, as far as the leaks go. I've been, you know, it's been happening more, it seems.
I have been proactive, been trying ideas and stuff that, like, I never used to put degreasers in the system. Well, the grease is continually getting worse. So, what we started doing is at least once a week, we put a degreaser in that pump station and it helps clean the force main out. And we have seen an improvement in our flows doing that. So, you know, I didn't think there would be that much, be able to be built up and because of the pressures and the flows. But it, after a couple of weeks, we saw the difference, so. But, you know, I'm only got so many tricks up my sleeve.
Then you have to deal with the chemical at the other end. Now, does it affect the rest of the system?
Actually, it's, this is why I, I'd never put it in before because it was, it was more of a chemical thing, but this is more of a, it's a green product. And in fact, it smells like pine. So, when you put it in the pump station, whatever, breaks down the grease, but it covers the, any odor you may have. And you can smell it coming out the end of the pipe. And some days, if we get enough in, we can smell it coming into the plant. But it's, it's supposed to be green and not be hazardous to the environment, so. It's not cheap, but.
But if it works, then it'll.
Exactly.
Yep.
Just get us to funding.
Did they camera the siphon that's down by, well, it's between, it goes under the river by Jiffy Mart?
Actually, I don't think they camered it, but that's one of our newer ones. That's one that was taken out during Irene.
Oh, oh, okay.
And we put in two new barrels, two new six-inch pipes and it's all encased in concrete. So, that's my newest river siphons that I have, so.
So, at this point, I think, and I know Peter, you've been involved in some, I had questions about this sometimes. We have the sewer system pretty much mapped out. We know where, where all the lines are pretty much and what sizes they are and where they end and where they go.
Yep.
And that helps.
Yeah, I only have one spot that's, I'm questioning, and it's near the railroad, so there was, they, and it was near a spot where they used to dump so many, all their steel and stuff in their scrap. So, trying to find a manhole amongst that stuff. And I dug up quite a bit of stuff and, and I just, I can't find the manhole. But I, I've camered into it and we see the flows coming in and stuff, but.
Oh, you got the camera all the way into it?
Yeah, the best septic did finally. Yep. I tried it three times before we got in there, but we got there. So.
That's right. I helped them one day. We didn't get anywhere.
No.
Any other questions? Any other concerns? Jeff, thanks for the work that you do in keeping the department going. I think we have one of the best water systems in the state.
The water system, yep.
As far as the quality of the water and everything associated with it. And the sewer department hangs in there, too, until I guess that's going to be coming up, the upgrade in the next, I don't know how many years, but I think we're at, we're not at capacity, but we must be pretty close.
Well, yeah, we, like, we, we're getting there to our permit limit, but like I said, we've had these rain events. We've been way over flood stage and there's, there's nothing I can do. Just watch it go out the door, so.
Well, thanks again for your work for the town and what you do for the town, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Glad to answer any questions anytime you may have.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda was sewer department, but I figured it was kind of rolled into one anyway, wastewater and sewer.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Peter's the motion, Ariana's the second. Any discussion on it? All those in favor of adjourning our water sewer commissioners meeting, please say aye.
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 Heather, I forgot that you're out there. I just wanted to let everybody know that one of our members is attending by Zoom. I hope you're feeling better soon, too.
Thank you.
So, we're going to roll right into our select board meeting, a special select board meeting, which is only special because of the starting time. Usually, it's 6:30, but now it's?
6:55.
6:55. Any changes to the agenda? First item on there. Hearing none. We head out to approve the minutes of our November 15th select board meeting.
Make a motion to approve the November 15th, 2023 select board meeting minutes.
Second.
Lee is the motion and Peter's the second. Any changes, errors, omissions, anything on those November 15th minutes?
I have none.
None.
Heather, you okay?
I'm good.
All those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Those minutes are all set. Next one is our December 6th select board minutes. Motion to approve?
So, I did not attend that meeting.
All right, motion to, yeah, I'll, motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Peter's the motion and Ariana's the second. Any changes, corrections, errors, omissions, anything on the December 6th select board minutes? All those in favor of approving the December 6th select board minutes, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Nobody. All set. Citizens comments? If there was someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Anybody for citizens comments?
Bill Lindsay, I just would ask permission to speak on item eight when the board gets to that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else under citizens comments? Anyone out there in Zoom land? Hearing none. We'll head on on the agenda. Next item is our continuing saga of our short-term rentals.
Do you want old business? Do you want old business?
Yeah. Thank you, Julie.
We can skip it.
Well, I had an arrow next to it and I was going to put it down, but yeah. Julie, take us through our old business, please.
There is not much.
Thank you.
Personnel policy really is the, is the key thing. We did find somebody who is a relative of somebody from Nemec. I was very excited to learn about her company. She, I have spoken with her. She does personnel policies for many municipalities in the state and works directly with VLCT as well, which was very exciting. So, she is going to start the work. It'll be about $2,300 from start to finish, but it is a soup-to-nuts rewrite. Our policy was last adopted in 2012. So, in the personnel world, that is a very long time. And for that cost, I mean, with my hourly rate, it's, we're better off to just hire her. She's a professional in it, knows all the laws, knows the rules. So, I am very excited to have her work on this and get this off my desk. Flooding, everybody knows. We had some flooding on Monday. Nowhere near the damage that we had in the July storms, but there are some roads that we lost, Popple Dungeon being one of them. Kirby called me this evening. Popple Dungeon is officially open and the road should be completed tomorrow morning. They are working on Smokeshare. There is a section of Smokeshare out. There is a section of Dean Brook that is out. There is a section of Lover's Lane that is out, but they are gradually getting things pieced back together. We are keeping track of costs. We are keeping track of costs as though it is a FEMA event because the state is looking at whether or not this will be another FEMA event. So right now, these expenses, we're going to pop over into that flood fund part two and we'll kind of reconcile. We're at the, at a year-end. Talked to our auditor today. He said, you know what, I would take those expenses and just plop them into the fund account and we'll just figure out how to reconcile that in 2023. Because a lot of those expenses just aren't even going to come in. I, I'm not going to get those bills until well into 2024. So popping it out of the general fund over into the separate fund is just going to be the way to go to keep track of it better. So that's what we'll do.
What are those numbers looking like?
I, I don't know. What I'm getting is, Poppel Dungeon's going to be expensive. Smokeshare's going to cost something. Like, I'm not getting real numbers here, so I, I can't, I, I think we're definitely to six figures. I mean, you know, July flood was 1.9 million. We're certainly not that. But we will, we will be well into six figures by the time we're done.
So Julie, can I ask you a question? Do you know what the law is regarding the town removing trees that fall across rivers from previous floods? Because there's some concern that part of the damages that were observed were due to the fact that there are trees that are across the river causing damming and water flow.
Yeah, there was a tree, there was a tree that was down and then another tree that came down during the flood, the beginning of the flood, that blocked a section of, diverted the water and basically is what took out all of Poppel Dungeon, or that whole section of Poppel Dungeon. The guys were going to try to get in during the flood event with the equipment to remove the trees. It was just simply too dangerous. So I'm not risking life safety to save a road. So that, that, we, when the, when that one tree was down, they just didn't feel that it was severe enough with everything else we were dealing with, with the July storm. River debris, getting gravel debris out of the rivers was the priority. There has never been a point where we have walked the rivers completely to see what trees are down.
Is it, is there any state regulations that prevent us from doing that?
We have to have permission. You have to have permission, yes.
For every tree or for just any waterway?
If there is a tree that is down, even in the river, over the river, you have to have permission to remove that tree from the waterway. We cannot just do that.
What about private citizens?
If it's on their property, but I would.
Technically, the river is owned by the state. So if I have a tree that's going from my property across the river, I can't take that out?
No, you need permission to do it.
And who do I call?
Scott Jensen, who is Rivers, who is our Rivers engineer. No, unfortunately, our tree warden does not have control over debris in rivers, but, and she doesn't want it, by the way.
State representative, you know, she would know who to talk to, but.
Your Rivers engineer, Scott Jensen. Scott Jensen, I can get you his contact info if you have a tree that you would like to have removed.
Because I, you know, just driving up and down Poppel Dungeon Road, there are hundreds of trees across the river now. And so if we can't take them out or we have to ask permission, there needs to be something done to fix that so that we don't have to go, I mean, this poor guy's going to get a thousand phone calls saying, I need to take this tree down or out of the river.
And it's certainly something I can have Kirby talk to him about. Again, our priority has been getting roads back, not trees across rivers. So since the July flood, I mean, we, we're back now, but we're just back from July. So I can certainly talk to Kirby and see what the conversations are that he's already had with Scott. Why don't we start there?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'm not trying to make trouble. I'm just trying to prevent future.
Absolutely, but we're just.
It's not just Poppel Dungeon. I mean, every river in the, in the town has the same issue.
Under, we can just only tackle one problem at a time.
If they declared it an event like they did in July, we could take the trees out, but they wouldn't pay us for it. We'd have to take it out our own.
You still have to have permission.
Still have to have permission.
You still have to, there is never a freedom to just go in and take what you want. Clean out debris, clean out gravel, clean out trees. There is never a freedom to do that. You still have to have permits. It just opens the door for them to issue permits. But you still have to have permits, you still have to have approval. We've had areas, even after July, where we were told, no, you cannot remove that section. So it, we, it's very strict, what we can and cannot do. Well, no, you know.
So not to, not to chase this rabbit too much more, but did they give a reason why we couldn't do certain sections or is this arbitrary?
No, there's reasons, there's justification.
Did they tell us reasons?
When he talks to Kirby, okay, it's not one reason for every tree in the town, okay? It's site-specific.
Right, right.
So I don't know the reason why each individual tree can't be removed. But when he talks to Kirby, yes, there is justification given of, as to why a tree can't be removed, why this section of gravel can't be removed. There's, it's their river science piece that I really cannot speak to. But yes, there are conversations and justifications given of why we can or cannot.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm not trying to pile it on, I'm just trying to understand.
That's fine. And, you know, tree removal, I know people are frustrated, like, but again, we have a highway crew of 10. When we're rebuilding every road in this town after an event and dealing with river gravel debris, we are limited on what we are able to do. And so I know people in Poppel Dungeon were upset about trees that came down and there was a lot of Facebook garbage that I will not address ever and they're highly offensive to my highway crew. We do what we can do. We have a phenomenal crew. I will defend them to my death. They are amazing. And occasionally, there is a tree that we can't get to. And that is just what the consequences are of living on a dirt road. I live on one myself.
And I guess the, the point that I wanted to make was that if I own property along a river, which I do, and I see a tree across it, I would like to take that out.
Yeah, you got to have permission to do it.
I know that it's going to cause problems down the road flooding my property. So now I guess I have to call the state.
You do. You do. And I will give you his contact info.
Thank you.
Jeff?
I just want to kind of, so everybody's clear, too. I can tell you, Kirby and myself, in these last couple of flood, flood events, we have to deal with Scott Jensen, A and R, and we have to deal with Mark Pickering for the highways and stuff. And I can tell you, both of them said to me, um, a couple of different occasions that they, if we ask for something, they don't usually hedge it too much because they, they work good with us and they trust us. And, you know, working good with them guys, you're a lot better off. Because they know that we don't go and do something until we've talked to them. And they, they, they trust as far as that goes, so. And they, and they, they do give us a little more leeway as, as much as they can. So, you know, I, I don't agree with A and R's rules about no trees or not taking as much gravel out of the river because, like I said earlier, if they hadn't taken that amount of gravel above the plant, it would have been going through the plant at this time. So I, I feel the higher-ups need to rethink their policies a little more. I don't, you know, I'm not all about cleaning things out like they did in the 70s, going in there with D8s and D10s and just push everything, make a big canal. I'm not like, but, you know, I think there is more that we have to be doing if we're going to save the infrastructures that are near the, near the rivers. So, and, and that's something, you know, if we're replacing roads every time we get four inches of rain or wastewater plants, we are fortunate. I, I don't know what I would have done if we ended up like Ludl. That was, I mean, they just had a $6 million upgrade and their plant was just destroyed. And I don't know how this community would survive that, so. Hopefully, we can work with A and R or whatever and get some of the regulations lessened or compromises or whatever.
And we do work well with them.
Yes, we do. And, and especially those two guys, they've been doing it a long time and we've been doing it a while, so we, we worked with them for a while, so.
There, there's a lot going on in the background that happens between the state agency and the local agency that people aren't aware of. And it's permissions and the work and everything else, sometimes they just see what they see and they react to that one specific item that they saw and make phone calls and light the fuse and things happen and, and people don't realize that there's a whole story and there's a whole background to what's going on.
And most of the guys are really good about getting back to us, even though they're getting inundated from everybody, too. They, they don't just forget us. They, they'll call us, leave us a message or text us or something. They do get back to us when they have a minute, so. I, I appreciate working with them, both of them. They're, they're very helpful for town communities, so. I just wanted to bring that up so everybody was aware.
Thank you. We don't have a shortage of rivers in town, that's for sure.
So the last item I had is, as you know, we applied for the municipal planning grant to have an evaluation of the town property. We were awarded that grant. So once we get the grant agreement, usually takes 30 to 60 days, the housing commission, I'll be working with the housing commission and they will be heavily involved in, uh, RFP and selecting, you know, selecting a consultant and beginning that work. On that note, I, I think it is a good opportunity to kind of say, um, so things are going really well with the housing commission. I think this was our third meeting. It's a very, very efficient group of individuals, I can tell you. It's, it really is quite great. Meetings are quick and it is fabulous. But anyway, um, one of the things that we will be discussing, and just to kind of, you know, put in your bonnets a little bit to be thinking about, um, when I was at VLCT, our board meeting last week, Josh Hanford, who was the commissioner of something to do with housing for the state, is now on staff for VLCT. So him and I had a conversation about housing. And, um, him and Katie Buckley from VLCT are planning to come down to the housing commission and have a little conversation about, you know, funding sources and how to get started and things, and which will be a great conversation. But one thing that Josh did throw at me is, your very next step is housing trust. You need to start thinking about how you're going to, not fund development of a project, but the housing commission is going to need funds. There's always a place where funds are needed. And so just starting to think about some of those things. So I just throw that at you, that there's no discussion for it tonight. I know nothing more than that, right? And we'll have them down to have some conversations and what does that look like? What does that mean? But, so they'll, and I will let you know when he comes so that you, as a select board, if you want to attend and kind of hear it from the beginning, can be a part of that.
That'd be great.
Yeah, they're doing good work. It's going to be great.
Well, it's, it's going to be, you know, a long journey, but at least we're on the path and we're going to try to do what we can at a local level. Anything else on old business?
No, not for me.
Anybody else have anything? Next item is our short-term rentals, and I believe Hugh Quinn from the Planning Commission is on board and I think Preston, our zoning administrator, administrator is also on board. It's been, I think we've had quite a few discussions over the, over the months regarding this and kind of looking for some direction and some help on this as far as how the board wants to proceed with this. And I'm open for some comments or suggestions on what direction the board would like to go with this.
I'd like to just jump in and say to Preston and Kathy and the Planning Commission, I appreciate all the work that's been done to help us identify, um, the number of short-term rentals in Chester, the impact on our communities. And I'm sorry I wasn't here at the last meeting to see that presentation, but what I've come to think about this is that I'm not sure we have a lot to do at this point, other than, I want to pick up on something that Peter said a couple of meetings ago, relative to when somebody comes into town and buys a piece of property, putting some kind of a timeframe on when they can, um, set up a short-term rental or apply for a permit for a short-term rental specifically in specific neighborhoods where the impact of, on the neighborhood from a short-term rental or another short-term rental could be significant. I'm thinking mostly of the Stone Village, but there are other areas in town where the neighborhoods could be gutted. But from what I recall and what I read from the last meeting, it seemed like the majority of short-term rentals are out in what I would call the hinterlands, where you don't necessarily see your neighbors or you're not right one on top of each other. And so from that perspective, I, I don't know that we really need to do a whole lot about, um, regulating short-term rentals per se, but possibly doing something along the lines of requiring a one-year or two-year hiatus before somebody can turn their new home into a short-term rental.
Lee, when you speak on that as far as short-term rentals, unhosted or hosted difference?
Well, obviously, I would love to see more hosted short-term rentals than unhosted, but the reality of the situation is that there are a lot of people who buy property in Chester who are looking to help pay the taxes or, you know, so they can afford it. And they're renting it out a few times a year to help with expenses. If somebody's turning it into a business like a motel, and I know that that's something that you're concerned about, that has a different flavor to me than just somebody who, you know, has a house and they want to rent it out for a couple of weekends in the winter time for skiers or whatever. You know, obviously, I think that a hosted short-term rental is a better asset to our community than an unhosted one because we have somebody here who has eyeballs on the property and has a vested interest in protecting that investment. But that doesn't mean that the unhosted ones, people are going to be totally irresponsible either, so.
I just wanted to bring up the fact, the difference between the two, because during all these conversations that we've had, I've always thought that the hosted ones, I really don't want to have anything to do with it, the owner's there, it's his property, he lives there and stuff. And I think it's a totally different, uh, situation than unhosted.
Right. Yeah, and I guess that, you know, to clarify my comment earlier about piggybacking on Peter's idea was, I think that would be for unhosted. You know, somebody buys a property and they want to, they want to list it as a short-term rental, let's make them wait for a year or two before they do that. And that may discourage that kind of use of the property.
All right. So I, I have some specifics and then maybe we can build out from there. Okay, the first is an unhosted short-term rental must be owned for a minimum of two years. And these are all things that we could just put in the ordinance. The next is an unhosted rental cannot abut or be across from another unhosted short-term rental. And that's strictly in the village zoning. Okay, so now outside the village districts, an unhosted rental in the, in the rural districts be 500 feet apart from another. And that kind of separates some of the concerns I've heard from people because they seem to cluster. And that would take care of that. And then the one other thing would be, and, and we had talked about this on the planning board before, that there would be a hotline on the web service for complaints. So I, and that would, these would all be put into the ordinance. I don't think conditional use works. And one of the reasons that I don't think conditional use works is you can't say no to it. If it's a conditional use, you know, and you can't just blanketly say no, it's, there's a use and there are conditions. So I wouldn't put it into zoning.
So, I'm sorry. Relative to your first statement about making, in the village area, no abutting or across from, what, what would that actually look like, say, in the Stone Village?
The Stone Village, they, they, those four are fine.
Okay.
So when I, when, because I like to take something like this and play it out.
Right.
And, and that doesn't affect that, but it'll affect if one is added.
Right, and that's, I guess my question is, if we hopscotched every other piece of property on, let's say, the north side of North Street?
Yep.
You know, that could be, I think there's 20 properties or 20 houses in that neighborhood, so you could have 10?
Well, you can't be, can't be across the street.
Okay, so does that make it seven or?
Well, the thing is, you can.
And I'm not asking you.
Well, no, well, I tried this and this worked fairly well.
Okay.
You know, and it didn't start. I mean, you can do, I kind of tried to play with a number that you couldn't have more than. than four percent of the housing stock in Chester could be unhosted rentals, but the problem that I had with that was that I really don't have good data to say that, you know? About the only thing we have a really good count on in Chester, according to Kathy, is sinks. You know, you have so many kitchens, so it would be, you could only have a short-term rental, four percent of your kitchens can only be a short-term rental is data that we actually have, because that breaks out the apartments and things like that.
But that doesn't help with the clustering.
Doesn't help with the clustering, and it doesn't seem like we're getting that there's a lot coming online either.
So one thing I like about this conversation between the two of you is, I've had a lot of concerns between meetings in my head about zoning, about bringing the STR conversation into zoning, and I have felt, I'm pretty against that concept myself. It feels like the ordinance is the place for our regulating, so I just want to affirm what you just said, which is, in describing the points you want to discuss, these could be accomplished within, by modifying the existing ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Heather, any thoughts on this topic?
Thanks. I think that changing the ordinance, I'd have no issue with, but I would like Preston and other people who do know the zoning to reflect on our suggestions and give us feedback, because there could be unintended consequences, or there could be issues with governing what we're gonna do, who's gonna, you know, enforce the ordinance. So I'd like feedback from them before we change that.
Thanks, Heather. And I agree with you on that, to get some input from Preston and maybe Hugh, or whoever else would be involved, to help us with that ordinance part, and especially, like you said, regarding the enforcement part. Because when you start talking about abutting or across the street, there's a lot of gray areas, when you start talking property lines and how they go and where they-
I can see where you'd come up with gray line, gray areas, but it is appealing in that the registration process would involve name, address, here's the address on the plot, here's where all the other ones are colored pink, nope, doesn't fit, yes, does fit. It feels like it, if something is well-written in the ordinance, then it's a matter of looking at the property map, and it's a yes or no, it's not an opinion.
And, and how do you feel, would that go for all the areas in town, or just specific ones?
There's too specific, so you just, we just approve village ordinances, pretty much, you know? So neighborhood, they're pretty much called out, so that's in the adjacent area. Once you get to the hinterland, the hinterland, you're five hundred feet apart, and when you, when you do that, there are places that are, you know, that have been developed, so they're, they're, like, one resident is surrounded by vacation homes. Now, if they're all registered right now, they're there right now, so, but if you didn't register, because it's not zoning, which one of the things that I worked on in zoning is the legacy use, so if you put it, it becomes a zoning item, then it could be a legacy, I've always had this, this here, so therefore it is always here. And you're trying to just control, control the spacing, so I, we had comments here that we wanted to have, that rural neighborhoods should be protected as well. And that's one of the bigger problems, is the spacing, and by doing this, you got enough space, it's not an issue.
Does that imply that there would be an ordinance for each zone within our community? Or one ordinance that would call out different?
One ordinance that would really call, there are really two, two ma, I would call master zones, and one is you're gonna go to the village, which is what we just approved, and the other is the rural districts. So, once you get out, I don't know what they're gonna do with R40 or the adaptive, you know, but once you get outside of town, then you would have the spacing outside the village, where you have more space. So, you know, five hundred feet in town could be five houses.
I just want to make one point, and that's that anything we discuss at this point does not apply to the-
Existing.
Thirty-one or fifty-four, I forget where we are, currently registered STRs.
Right.
So if somebody registered as they were supposed to before a certain date, wherever they are, nothing we discuss here affects their viability.
I would think, I would agree with that.
Thank you, great.
So-
Arnie?
Yeah.
The other thing, of course, once we get a firm plan of what we'd like to do and have it reviewed, I'd also like it to be reviewed by Jim or some legislate, or legal mind, because, you know, we can't forget that there's quite a few lawsuits going on about this, so I'd like to do that prior to implementing something.
Good point, Heather.
The question I have is, who's responsible for updating the ordinance? Is that us, or can we pass the buck?
Well, the Planning Commission came to you with the draft.
Okay.
Actually Preston, I think, with the assistance of the Planning Commission, so, you know, Preston and I can chat and I would say-
But it is our, they drafted it, but it is, it does come from us.
It comes from you, but it's drafted by them, so, but I would-
Doing the wordsmithing.
No, what I would recommend, correct, we'll do the wordsmithing. Preston and I will work on that.
I thought that's what we were doing tonight. We're just gonna present our ideas to them, right?
You want to take time to sit here and write out-
No, no, I thought, no, I was not, I know, I thought tonight that, okay, here's our ideas. You guys have a meeting, come back and talk to us.
Correct.
With, with, with the ideas that we're presenting, I don't think it would hurt to have another set, a couple of set of eyes on it also, that maybe they might catch something we're missing, or have a different perspective on it, so that we can draft a document that will make sense.
Preston and I will chat tomorrow, Preston.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
Preston, I wanted to thank you for your notes, your thoughts on this whole thing. Anything that we've discussed tonight that concerns you, or you think is a good idea or a bad idea?
Well, I think my note simply was just, you know, please count the cost, and look at it from what benefit you think you'll actually secure versus the troubles, and I, right now, we have essentially gotten everyone to register. I mean, we might still have some troubles, but so far, it's been a carrot and a stick, and we've just been able to do it, no enforcement at all, because the burden of registering isn't all that hard. Once we start telling people, you know, gee, we see you have an ad, you haven't owned your house for two years, you have to shut down, we're gonna get some enforcement. So, you know, that's the, that's the cost we have to look at.
Some, some information I just want to throw out there also, and I agree with everything that we've been talking about as far as steps to take. I've always been, I guess, the one that wanted it to be a conditional use, as far as part of the zoning things, but with the majority of the Board not seeing it that way, that's great, that's the way things work. It's only because, when I look at it, I look at it as a business, and in our zoning laws and bylaws, we speak of tourism and lodging, and it's not even allowed in certain districts, and that's exactly what this is. It's, in the state of Vermont, it's three point six percent of the housing stock right now, and that's not a real lot, but it does put pressure on people to maybe do short-term rentals as opposed to long-term rentals. So, maybe the effect isn't easy to quantify, but it's there. There is that pressure. It seems easier to have a short-term rental for a couple of weekends a month, as opposed to a long-term rental, which is sometimes difficult in this state, because the laws are really favorable to renters, it seems, as opposed to landlords in this state. And there should be a happy balance somewhere, but it seems like the scale has tipped a little too far the other way, which is, I think, sometimes what causes some of these problems. It, another number out there, sixteen percent of the Vermont homes are seasonal or vacation. And back in 2014, there was only about a thousand short-term rentals, we're up to about twelve thousand now. So, and the increase from last year to this year was over sixteen percent. It seems like it's slowing up, it seems like it's starting to calm down, which makes me less anxious to really do something more drastic and more regulatory and affecting people in possibly wrong ways and stuff, because like what Preston said about losing capital or losing the support of second homeowners and stuff, isn't exactly what we want to do either as a Board, because they're a big part of the state of Vermont and our community, and we're a tourist state. That's, you know, that's what we are, and that's how we generate a lot of our income. That was the last of the information that I had out there. I was surprised at some of those numbers and stuff, and hopefully it'll slow up and things'll change and things'll calm down, and it seems like it will, because there hasn't been that much going on in the rest of the state. I mean, in our town, it's not going on, because we don't allow it right now, but it has come up a couple of times that people asked about it and questioned about it, but they realize that it's, there's a six-month period, and then something will be happening one way or another and stuff. So I think it's a good idea to do the ordinance part of it, and maybe in conjunction with Preston, and hopefully maybe with Hugh, to get another set of eyes on it with the ideas that we brought forward, and see what we can come up with, and we'll take it from there.
So, part of what we discussed early on was taking the crawl, walk, run approach, and I think we're beyond crawl, but not quite to walk, so I think going to mosey stage at this point.
We're gonna mosey.
And I like that, because we were able to collect the data that helped me to see exactly what we're dealing with as a town, and to recognize that it's not as dire an issue that it could have been, or that we maybe thought it was. So I, I think we're in a good position right now, and looking forward to seeing some edits to the ordinance.
Great.
When does our six-month period end, Julie?
What's that?
When is the end of our six-month pause?
April first, I think, or?
It's April first, right, Preston?
Yeah, I've been saying March 30th, same difference.
Okay. Great, thank you.
So we're, we're getting, and that date was just earlier or later, if we needed an extra month or whatever, just at least had something to shoot for and to go for. All right. Get my other paperwork here. Next item on our agenda is library trustee appointment, and I guess we have to appoint Lynn Smith to the Board of Trustees until March of 2024, at which time she'll run for the unexpired term of Jesse Bailey, who has, I think he was moving away or something, I believe.
Don't know the exact reason for it, but-
Sorry.
Sorry. Matthew Gorski, I won't move, because I know a lot enough. Jesse did send us a letter of resignation, he did not state any reason beyond not being able to fulfill, and that was as for after three months in a row not making the regular meeting, so.
So we need a motion to appoint Lynn Smith for the remaining term of Jesse Bailey until March of 2024. So moved?
Second.
Please, the motion, and Peter's the second, ain't discussion on it. And I guess Lynn will be running again in March?
I do not know. I would assume so.
I hope so.
I would as well, but to my knowledge, I have not been given any direct information, yes or no.
All those in favor of appointing Lynn Smith to the Board of Trustees to the library, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Next item is, as our budget season is upon us, we go through all our departments, and we get a presentation by all the department heads and the different areas of town, and in this one, we're gonna be talking to the library folks, and Matthew Gorski is here, the Chair, and our new head librarian, Gail Zachariah, is also here, and Donna Hutkins is here, and I, is there, might be some folks online also? No? But anyways, they're here to give us a presentation regarding their budget, the, a budget presentation, and maybe even talk a little bit about the strategic plan that they have, so, I'll turn it over to you guys.
I'm excited as hell. But you can do anything.
And Gail, welcome as our new library head.
Yeah, welcome. So, thank you, and I've been here three months now, and I recognize people's names and faces, and I hope you come in the library and say hello. I hope you already know a lot of the staff there, we're all really friendly, and we see a lot of people. So, I've, we've come to ask for your annual contribution, and it's more than last year, it's a little bit more. We tend to think of things in a library, we tend to take the whole budget, divide it up based on the per capita. So like last year, you guys paid thirty-two dollars per capita, and we were able to do a lot of good services. When we did that strategic plan, what, we found that people really liked the library, they really like it a lot, but they really want us to do more, and I think that even some of the people here that were interviewed, kind of said that, you could do more. So we feel like we really want to do more, and it's gonna take a little bit more. So like, the per capita with the requests that we have, the per capita for Chester comes out to thirty-five dollars, so it's really only an increase of two dollars per capita, and we feel we can do a whole lot with that, those extra two dollars. We're also asking, it's a bigger percentage, we, the money that we ask from Andover also increased, which was a bigger percentage, because they really haven't been paying at the same rate, so we want to increase that, and we want to provide some special, I mean, we want them to feel like they're a part of the whole library community as well. We're also looking at increasing some of the, well, slowly moving up, because the non-resident fee, because it was much lower than the per capita fee, and so we really would like to have everybody contributing in the end. Might take us a little while to get there, roughly the same, you know, right now it's thirty-five dollars, and we're actually, thirty-five dollars is lower than many of our neighbors, like Hartland, and ones have about the same sites as us. So, but I would say the biggest increase, and it's seventy-five percent of our budget, and it's because of the forward-thinking Board that really have worked really hard in the last year or two years to bring up personnel costs, because the personnel cost is seventy-five percent of our entire budget. And so, that doesn't really give you much space to cut, because we can't really cut, you could cut the books a little bit, but you know the library, if there aren't books for people to check out, and we already were not, ten thousand dollars. It's the amount, what we budgeted for books last year, we would like a little bit more this year, but, I mean, that's not really a lot. Books are, even with our discount, each book costs fifteen dollars. A large print book, and we all know that we have an aging population, the discounted price for a large print book is forty-eight dollars. So, library materials are expensive, and one of the biggest costs are the digital items, which we found with the strategic plan, that people really want, they want physical books, they want digital books. I don't know whether you, any of you read using Overdrive, the Libby app, but that's a shared resource, it's really good, now everybody in that state of Vermont can share that, but the way digital books work, it's one copy per user. If two people want to read that same book, even though it's digital, at the same time, the state of Vermont needs two copies of it. And, digital books, because of licensing, oftentimes only, we only have them for either maybe two years, five years, forty-eight checkouts, and they cost not forty-eight dollars a book, they're costing two hundred dollars a book. It's licensing, it's- It's licensing, it's, no one really, you know, people say that if libraries were being invented now, that nobody would make a library, because there's no money making. In fact, in my, the thing that I showed you, in one of those pages, it shows that libraries, for every dollar that someone pays for a library, they get more back. So last year, with our budget of $142,000, we really provided $300,000 worth of services to the community, because you can add up all the books they checked out, all the programs they attended, and there's values that you can give to them, that's standard value, so that everyone could do, using the same figures, and it came out to $300,000. So it's really a really good investment, the libraries are. So that are the budget highlights, and what else did I talk about? You might not, I mean, I know sometimes when you come to the library, you might not see a lot of people in the library, but that doesn't mean there's not a lot of people that go in and out of the library. In fact, you know, like, I just talked about digital materials, some people never even come into the library. But last year, in the 11 months that we've collected data, 1,300 people come into the library every month, and we're only open 30 hours a week, so that really is a lot. And we also deliver books to people. I mean, there's lots of that, but there are some people also that we take books out to. So I think that we can be a really beneficial part of the community. I think people talked about, in the strategic plan, they talked about wanting to be more of a community hub. I mean, those are the kind of things that we can do. I mean, we, especially with, I think people are more able to do that. Some of the increased personnel costs that happened, it's one new thing that happened this year, is that we have an on-call librarian, so that when, so we always have two people in the library, and there's only three people that work there. So sometimes we have to have an on-call librarian, but that helps us also in doing more programs, because, you know, it's time, you know, if all we're doing is helping people, they don't have time to do the programs, which is really, we're trying to do a whole lot with just a small amount of people, and I think we're doing pretty well at that. I wasn't here for the strategic plan, I just read the report, and honestly, there are so many comments, and people said over and over again, you know, they wanted the kind of books that they hear about on the radio. And they want, you know, they don't want to have to wait 50 weeks for a digital copy of a book, and they want more programs. And, you know, they, we are a welcoming library, but we want, they want even more, you know, and we've done a lot since last year, I think, to make it more welcoming.
So one of the main reasons that the personnel budget has increased is because we spent the last two years trying to bring our employees up to the average salary of what that position gets paid through Vermont, using Department of Labor statistics. So we're not looking to, we're not trying to overpay people, we're trying to, we're looking across the entire state, they're them saying, this per hour is how much the average person in this position gets paid, and that's what we're bringing ourselves in line to.
They actually really, because they were just a report, you know, there's a commission about, you know, libraries in Vermont and the needs of it, they break that down even by population, so we're not really comparing with, you know, Burlington. We're comparing it with libraries that are from 2,000 to 4,000 in population.
I have a, I have a question on a different subject. So under donations, fundraising, and grant expense, I'm curious, the budget for '23 was, for this year was optimistic at '26, combining donations and fundraising, and it looks like we're going to land closer to 15 than '26. But then you've, you've got some enthusiasm for '24, you've budgeted $39,000 in fundraising and donations, and that feel, I'm wondering who, if not the library staff, is working in development? If you're going to make a jump from 15,000 to 39,000?
I think you're adding everything up, which is what I did too.
Yeah, the two lines, donations and fundraising.
That's what I did too. I think that there is a decrease in what we would call fundraising, and an increase in donations and, like, book sales.
Mm-hmm.
Because actually, that's sort of what happened this year. We, the, you know, I think that perhaps we were overambitious on how much we could do for fundraising, and we, it was the opposite, without even trying, because the community does like us, and people come, you know, without even trying, the donations were higher than we anticipated. So we thought with some effort, they could, but the fundraising is the time-consuming part.
And that's actually what I'm trying to point out. If staffing, if our staff is busy enough now just supporting people, you've, I apologize, but fundraising last year says here was $2,500, and you're budgeting for next year 21,000. So I'm not sure how you're anticipating going from 2,500 to 21,000, or I'm not reading it right.
I don't think it's 21,000. I have, it's an increase of, there's an increase, it's like, I have like 48,000 when I added them up for.
Yeah, I'm talking about, so if you look just at the fundraising line, fundraising so far in '23 is 2,500. Fundraising budget for '24 is 21,000.
Okay, so I can actually speak to.
Okay. Great.
So one of the things of, that's been part of the challenge of, over the last year and a half, that most of us have been in the position, is getting our feet under us, figuring out everything that needs to be done. So essentially, since two Junes ago, there has been very little actual fundraising activity from the board.
Right.
Our focus moving into this next year is going to include doing actual fundraising activities, which we have not done for the last year and a half-ish.
What I was going to, what, I see what you're doing, what, I see that now, but see, I'm looking at it slightly different. You're looking at the money that was realized on that budget, but actually last year, we had anticipated making $22,000 in, yeah, and that, so to me, that's, it's a decrease. It's not a, it's an increase because we didn't make it.
I was trying to look at the reality, where we are now and where we think we'll be a year from now, seems dramatic, and I just wanted to understand if that was going to be placed on your shoulders, quite frankly, and I'm glad to hear it's not.
Yeah, we do have a board. Donna is our fundraiser, and.
You know, to put a little bit in perspective, in 2021, the fundraising was over 16,000.
That's what I'm excited about.
So when they were, when it was more.
That's, I'm not, I'm not questioning.
No.
The goal. I just want to make sure that goal isn't sitting on your shoulders. I don't want to do, can't do.
That's a good point.
That's great, thank you.
Fundraising and policy is our job.
Great. Thank you. You're welcome.
The town of Andover, usually it's been, you know, 2,700, 2,700, 2,600, you're, did you have a conversation with Andover about the 45?
We were at their meeting, was it two weeks ago?
Last Monday.
Last, okay.
No.
And it, it went well, I mean, we've had similar conversations when it came to our emergency services, and how we had a lower amount than we thought was necessary to run what we had to run, to provide the service for them too. And I'm just curious on how you come up with that number? Do you have a formula? Maybe is it worth looking at too, to see how that works, or how many people come from Andover?
Yeah, I gave them some figures like that, and I'll share them with you. Okay, I did have a formula, but my formula actually was even higher, so I thought, they won't pay that, because, you know, they could actually say, it's, you know, they could should say we don't want a library, so, and I do know from the strategic comments, the planning pods, you know, in Andover, some people probably go to Londonderry or Ludlow. So they, they could do, so I didn't really want to make it too much. And it was a positive meeting, they didn't say they would give that, they took a lot of notes. I told them that they have like 183 cardholders, and, I mean, they have a population that's sort of, that it's actually growing. And they have a lot of homeschoolers, and it turned out that they were homeschoolers in the, and the group. And like, when I, I ran a report that showed all the power users, the people that come in a lot, and 30% of the power users with Ludlow, so that's higher than even their 183, so I think.
With Ludlow or Andover?
Not Lud, yeah.
And Andover, okay, okay.
Sorry.
No, no, it's totally fine, I just, I was like, really?
Yeah, no, but we do have some of those. But, I mean, we do have a lot of non-resident cardholders as well, and we want to increase that, but again, we don't want to increase it. You know, my goal would be to have everybody paying, it's about the same per capita rate, but we don't want to do that right away, because at the same time, there are the libraries that could be, pay their residence fee for, but, I mean, we're cheaper than Rockingham, we're cheaper than, with our non-resident fee, it's much cheaper anyway, so I think it'd go up a little bit.
It was interesting what you said about the, the digital books and the expense. I thought the digital age was supposed to make information accessible to everybody, and instead, someone's trying to make big bucks on a digital book that's way more expensive than having the actual book in your hand, which is, that's disheartening, that really is just.
But nobody, you don't own that digital copy either, so it's really bad. It is very bad for libraries, it's bad.
Whereas if you purchase a book, it's yours. Pass it out a thousand times, and hopefully it gets worn out before it gets.
But for digital books, speaking in summary, who buys digital books, depending on the purveyor of the digital book, depends on whether you actually own it or not. For instance, those who are buying digital books through Amazon are not buying them.
They're renting.
They are leasing them. But when I buy a digital book through like Barnes &amp; Noble, I own the actual book, I can download a lot.
Can you donate that? I'm not asking you to do it, but if you own a book from Barnes &amp; Noble, is there any way to donate that to your library?
Not really, I mean, I, I'm sure the terms of service probably said you can, you can donate it, there, you can loan it, but you can't, there's going to be like, some requirements, but also for us to really loan the books, we have to be on a platform that, and so we're, you know, it's controlled too.
And I apologize for not knowing this, because I do have my library card. Does the writing library participate in any of the digital download library consortiums?
Yes, we participate, and we, the Green Mountain Library Consortium, we participate in that.
And that's digital?
Yes.
So the apps that you can go to for the writing library are the Palace app.
Yep.
And the Libby app.
Okay, great.
And that's, that's the, Green Mountain Library Consortium, that's the Libby app, which is also called Overdrive, so, I mean, that, you might recognize that name.
Just curious, thank you.
You're welcome.
And welcome.
Thank you.
So I had a couple of questions under the expense claim, specifically copier, you don't have any previous expenses for that, and then repairs and maintenance and cleaning?
Mm-hmm.
Repairs and maintenance, it's gone down a little bit, but the cost for, so far for '23 is significantly higher than what was budgeted for '23. Is there explanation for that?
A little bit. The cleaning in the past was, it was cleaning and maintenance, I think Julie advised us to separate those out, at least that was the message I got from that.
I'm sorry, I was responding to Heather's text.
That's right.
Heather's going to be dropping off.
They did have, we did at some point last year, change cleaning services, and that has become, you know, that is a significant portion of the bill. And so like, when I'm doing the budget, I'm thinking, hey, I can go to the cleaning, but I don't really have time to do that either, but still, it's almost the amount of money that we budget for books. It's what we're budgeting for cleaning. And we need to have a clean library, that's really important, but it's, you know, we're getting to the point where, you know, you have to save it all. And the copier, I don't have a history of when they got that copier, but it was when I came, and we paid $300 this year for it. That's, they managed the, you know, they call us, we could read how many copies were made, it was $300, I think.
Do you know about, like, copying?
I can talk a little bit to both of these things. So Pamela was very unhappy with the previous cleaning service that we had. So she came to the Board of Trustees and asked us, she was proactive when I got quotes, she presented us a new quote, told the board how much more it would be. I believe we approved the additional costs, knowing it would be outside the previously approved budget. I think that happened in June.
So I guess I'm just curious why we're not seeing previous numbers on that, because it looks like we paid nothing the last three years, and then you were asking for 7,800.
Because before this year, the maintenance, what's, wait, the cleaning service was included in the maintenance and repairs budget. We decided to split them up.
Okay.
That's why you can't really compare it that way. It is more money, the other thing about the two services, this now, they're coming once a week, previously, they were coming once every two weeks, which is not really quite enough.
Right. So under repairs and maintenance, what does that include? And maybe Julie, you can speak up to what we as a town are doing at the library for repairing.
Any maintenance to the building comes under the town's general fund budget?
Right.
I'm not sure what your repairs and maintenance is covering.
Yeah, so.
Expenses on, that we do come under the town's.
Donna, you have to come up and speak up here, Donna.
Yes.
Otherwise, give me your name.
I believe, and again, when we all came into this, we didn't really know what the details were, and sometimes we don't know what the details are, but I believe the maintenance was because the library was paying for snow shoveling.
Oh, probably, yeah, probably the snow, the shoveling the sidewalks.
Things, because like, as you said.
And probably trash, I think we're still paying for trash.
Right.
Yeah, I would imagine that, yeah, because any repairs or maintenance to the building comes under the general fund.
Right.
So, yeah.
But I, but I think you are right, you pay for snow removal for your shoveling, we plow, but you guys pay for snow removal for your shoveling and then your garbage.
But then we came to talk to you and worked something out with Steve, I don't, so I don't know if we're still paying or not?
We, yes, you are, yeah.
You're going to bill us.
Yeah, yeah, there is a, I think Steve, did he talk to you? Steve has hired or found somebody for you guys to.
I do know, we have a door counter that is now broken, and we have to fix, I suppose that could be the kind of maintenance this could be, for like some equipment that's in there.
So I just was, the comment was raised by looking at the spend to date of $6,500 versus the $3,800 budgeted and the $2,000 for next year's budget. So, I mean, I think it sounds reasonable, I just was curious where the money had gone this year.
I don't, I don't know the technology line item was under that either.
No, I don't think so.
Because I, I can see where you'd have a question on that, we ended up doing a refresh of most of the technology in the library, because it was dated, aged, and slower than a snail who headed up a hill in molasses.
Yeah, and that's the 12.6 that was spent so far this year versus the $2,000.
But I also believe the, when we went to the new cleaning company.
There was the one-time deep cleaning charge that was.
We had them go in really clean first, and then the regular bill is just slightly higher than what we paid, but we.
One-hour weekly maintenance for, you know, general dusting.
But they, they did go in and do, we did spend a few.
Yeah, it was a couple thousand for a deep.
Yeah, they went in.
And that was because they were new? I mean, is that a yearly thing?
Oh, yeah, they were new, but it needed to be. Oh, yeah, they were new, but it needed to be.
And to set the baseline and because, yeah.
It was-
So, so the other question I have is relative to your fund. What's the fund balance that the library has right now?
So, right now, if you're talking about the sustainability fund, it is approximately $150,000, which is $30,000 less than when most of us came into office due to market conditions.
Okay.
And that, we're, we will, we will tap it if we need to, but it's one of those things we like to keep in reserve because if there's a fire, we need to replace books.
Is there insurance for the books?
We, there, we do not see that there's any insurance of anything like that. They're on some old budgets, there's a line item for it, but I have not seen in any, I've looked back to-
Is that, can you get insurance?
We're going to look into that, but for now-
That's something we discussed today about looking into.
Yeah.
Well, and let me see if we're covering contents.
It might be through the panel.
Let me see if we're covering contents. Let me look.
Because as far as I know right now, there, if there is any disaster, if there is an electrical storm that fries the electric system, all electronics, we need to replace. And even if it is covered by insurance, we need a pool of funds so that we can get things back up and running as a public service as quickly as possible. And then we can take any funds permitted for insurance back into the fund.
So, part of the question I ask about the fund is, as you know, the town is in the same boat as you guys are. We're trying to ensure that the taxpayers are getting a fair shake and not having to pay too much. And I know last year, we gave a $5,000 increase over the previous year and now you're asking for $7,000 over that.
And I will remind, we did ask for seven last year.
Yes, I understand that.
Yeah.
And, but my, my point still remains that if there's $150,000 in an account that you're saving for a rainy day, I applaud you for doing that, but I also need to think about the taxpayer who is also trying to save for a rainy day. And I'm not saying I'm not going to prove this, I'm just letting you know my opinion. And I want to make sure that the taxpayer is getting the best value for their money. And I'm not, again, I'm not saying that they're not with the library, but there's a lot of requests for funds that come to the select board.
Right.
We just need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence.
Yeah, I understand. You have to spread the money out. But, the way we look at that money too, that money, I mean, in the end, that money that we have, that we're saving in case we need it for an emergency to bring the library back, that's sort of the taxpayer's money too. So, we feel like we're saying, you know, we are doing our due diligence by keeping that in its safe place so that the library they love and care for, it's going to be there. For another, and talk about Andover, I saw this in the strategic plan, I mean, I don't know how long ago it was, but several people talked about, once there was a library in Andover. And you could see the sense of loss they had, that they no longer had a library. And I know that people in Chester love their library just as much, so we want to keep it there for people all the time.
Also, with the loss in the markets over recent years, we're hesitant to touch it. You know, losing 15% over two years because of market adjustments, something with us not touching it, not spending for it, the fund has decreased by 15%. So, dipping into it for something that is an operational cost, something that is recurring and can be planned for, is something we are very hesitant to do.
And I understand that, Matt, and I agree and I applaud what you just said. The caveat I see is the donations and fundraising lines. If you look at from '21, or, yeah, '21 till '22, it dropped significantly. And then, again, but you guys have said, yes, we're going to do fundraising. And I applaud you doing that because I think that's a part, a good part of what the library, how the library can increase the income, the revenue, is to do fundraising. And I, I will be looking at that as the year goes by because that's really one of the things that, by your own admission, has slipped because of the change in the trustee board. So, I, I'm not saying that, you know, you shouldn't be asking for the money from the town, but on the other hand, I, I'm glad that you are looking for ways to bring in the revenue directly. I appreciate that.
We were not happy when Sam showed us how short we felt, but seeing this last year, and it has kind of reawakened the need to focus on it much more than we have over the last year and a half because it's certainly not sustainable.
Our fundraising letter went out before the flood. Yes, our fundraising letter went out this summer, a week before the flooding, so I think many people put it aside.
Floated away.
Floated away, yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you very much for that presentation. It always helps when we're at budget season to talk to all the different departments and see what's going on and get an idea of what's happening there. And it really helps with our decision as far as the allotment of money and what happens. We aren't going to be making any big decisions tonight on our budget. It'll be coming up in our January meeting probably, when some final numbers come in from the rest of the town as far as possible, surpluses in the highway department. But, the information that you gave us helps and the input helps us. I personally think that the library is a heart and soul of the town. I really do. It, I can't imagine not having a library in a town. It's, it's used by so many people for so many different reasons. And I think it's a vital part of town. And I think it's a part of economic development. I think when people look at a town to move here, they look at school systems, they look at a library, they look at services. And our town always gets high marks for the recreation department, for the library, for our town crew, and a lot of other reasons. And it, it takes money, but I think it's well spent.
And one of our more well-received programs this last year was a forging workshop that we had. It was, sign up was full within a week. And I want to say Pamela said there is a waiting list long enough to fill up these two hours.
Wow. We'll be doing that again, I guess.
And I know in the children's library, we recently added in an electronics learning system. It's not in circulation yet, but it will be getting there. I don't know how many of you remember the old Radio Shack spring-loaded put wire between places thing? This is a modern version of that. It's called Snap Circuits. So, we've done a, one of the smaller kits of that in to help spread some education in that matter too.
Excellent. Well, thank you for all you do.
Thank you. You too.
Appreciate the board, your whole board giving the message that it's extremely helpful to have a board that's supporting the local library and doing the work that everybody does. And then along with the library crew itself. I think you have, there's three of yous now? So, thanks again. Appreciate it. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is our general fund budget and capital expense review. Julie?
Who's got the popcorn? Hi. Good night, Heather. Heather is signing up.
Good night, Heather. Hope you're feeling better.
Better.
Okay, thanks, guys. See you soon. And happy holidays to all of you.
You too.
You too.
So, general fund budget, again, you know, this is first round consolidated department look. Still, fair number of numbers to come in, primarily revenue numbers is the, is the numbers that we're waiting for. Again, won't have until we close out 2023. The, at this particular point, again, I hate throwing these numbers out because there is revenue numbers that will, could swing this dramatically. But at this particular point, budget is up about $500,000. You will recall that 200, well, about 180 of that is, this is the first year that the public safety building principal payment comes into play. So, you're automatically up that 180 before you even add anything else in the budget. Did you have something you, you're looking at me enough?
No, I, I kind of asked to talk before you did because I didn't want to waste your budget time.
Oh, you wanted to speak before the-
We didn't know you wanted to speak before me.
No, no, I know that. But that does center in kind of my question. I went through, in the previous plans for, for capital budgets and for bond budgets, we had an indication of what that cost was going to be per year and was projected. And that was a line item in your budget, and as you went through your budget, you could see where that was. I went back over the previous books for '22, and times have changed and the accounting system has changed. And in some categories that I noticed that we did put, show line items, but some categories it appeared there was no transfer of those funds out of the line item. Now, I may have missed it, but in thinking about it, how this works, because it's a selectman's budget, the selectmen send that budget to the taxpayer. Once the taxpayer approves, which mostly they do, they're decent budgets, those funds have to be raised from taxes. Now, when those funds are raised from taxes, my question becomes, where are those funds shown? We send out the tax bills, you get a certain percentage of collection of taxes. Those line items would depend that those items are now funded and aligned with your budget. So, my basic question here is, where do the bond plan items, principal and interest, the capital plan transfers occur? When do they occur? And in what account would you show them? Are they carried in, under the new system of accounting? Are they carried in the fund balance? So, when you as a board look at the balance sheet and you see a fund balance, do you know how much is actually operating other than the charges for the bond plan and principal and interest? And once I went through this, knowing that we had a safety building, there was no allocation for the bond and the interest for the safety bill.
Yes, there is.
So, maybe it's there-
There is.
And maybe it's not visible.
So, what, so is it primarily the safety building you're looking at for the transfer? Is that the only one that you are, so they're always carried in, they're always carried in the general fund budget by department? The safety building is carried because it is multiple departments? So, the safety building, do you have a copy of the budget?
Uh, I do.
Okay. The safety building is carried in line 01178090.
How about the page?
Uh, it's, well, on my new one, it's page 10.
Okay.
It's under transfer accounts.
All right, good.
Okay. That is the public safety building, is in that transfer, it says transfer capital bond. That is, that could have a better description, and so I will add public safety building on that bill so that makes more sense to you. But that is where that is. High, transfers from highway are in highway. Transfers, all the transfers are within their budget. If there's not a transfer within that department, then they're, they have no expense for capital or bond.
Right. And those, those transfers that would, as I said, would actually show up, not individually unless you had a printout of what those transfers were in, in the fund balance, which we don't really, the only place you see the fund balance is in the balance sheet.
The only place you see the fund balance is in the balance sheet.
Right.
But the capital fund is a separate fund.
Right.
So, it's going to have a separate balance sheet.
Okay.
So, when you look at the fund, when you look at the balance sheet for the general fund, that's not going to include your fund balance for capital because that's a separate fund.
Okay. So, so if I was to want to follow this, I need to also get a capital fund balance sheet.
Correct.
Thank you.
If you want to follow, yes.
Good. That's, I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah. And if you want, if you want a breakdown, like if you're, if you're looking at highways transferred to capital, so that's when you come to this.
Yeah, I guess I didn't get that sheet, but that's okay.
So, that's, this is in the front of your town report, but there's also a copy over there, so.
Okay.
But this, this gives you your detail.
Right.
The budget would be too big if I-
And to me, I have to read that in conjunction with-
Correct. You'll see, the numbers all mesh.
Okay.
Yep, look at them together.
I know there was a change in the accounting system, which is quite frankly difficult.
Well, there's not a change in the accounting system. I want to be clear on that. We're using the same accounting system.
Well, we were cash and-
Oh, oh, the change from, from cash to accrual?
Right.
What, that was years, yeah, probably 15 years ago, but yes.
But for us old people.
Yep, no, that's fine. I just want to make it clear, there's not been a change in our accounting system. That means something different to many people.
I'm still trying to recover from the transition from cash to accrual in my own company, so I feel you.
No, that was many years ago. That was many years ago, yeah.
Teaching an old dog new tricks is quite different.
Absolutely. And I'm happy to sit down with you, Bill. And if you want to just come in, we can-
I didn't want to take up a lot of time.
No, no, no.
Bill, when we first made that difference with the capital plan, where each department showed their contribution instead of a lump sum. It was more so that we knew how much each department was costing the capital plan and it was spelled out a little better, which is why it puts it in a few different places in the main balance sheet. But it does list it in columns on here, so you could look, hey, there's the fire department, there's the police department, this is what it's costing each department.
Well, I was, I was in favor of that capital plan, but as we went out to the later years extension, I was on the board same time as you were, and we were seeing those transfer numbers to be raised with taxes were growing. And once you approve the plan, you're going to have to raise the money. So, that's why I would-
And it changes, and it's not really a capital plan. It's more like a loan balance sheet.
It's not a capital plan at this point. We're not building capital in it.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Um, I don't remember where I was.
The beginning.
Yeah. So, okay, we're up, so remember, we're up a little over $500,000. 180 of that, right out the gate, is the first principal payment for the public safety bond. The remaining is about $370,000. If you pull that out, it's about 9%. Cost of inflation, the last I looked last week was at about 8.5%. There are certainly things that we can look at doing. I would say maybe we just start thinking about them, but don't make any decisions until we actually see where we land, obviously. There really in this budget is no fluff. There are no extra projects, there are no extra purchases, we're not adding something to rec, we're not, there's none of that in here. A fair amount of this is just truly operational cost. Blades for the plows have tripled since January. It's those types of expenses that are up. Department heads have gone back, we, and they're still really thinking about their budget to say, is there, you know, could, could I stretch this bridge a little bit longer if I did X, Y, or Z? So, we're still thinking about those things. But again, not, there's really not any fluff. I think we're close to the point of, if we cut too much, we're going to cut services. And so, you need that, and that's a conversation maybe to have at some point. A couple of thoughts, if we need to go there, there is, to Bill's point, there is a fund balance in the capital plan. It's about 286 at this point. Remembering 200 of that is the match for the sidewalk project that we funded several years ago. the match for the sidewalk project that we funded several years ago that we're carrying, which leaves about 86,000. I mean, one thing maybe we could do in 2024, there are two payments where it's the last payment on the loan. Maybe that could be paid for out of capital. That would drop it a little over 50,000 from the general fund. We did that in 2023, as you'll recall. There is a potential of doing that. Match for windows for the Yosemite, Clapper Bell for the library, those were two fairly large items. Combined would be about 42,000. Again, true one-time expenses could come out of ARPA. ARPA is sitting at around 400,000. We were holding it because there was talk about using that to potentially purchase the solar field. Doesn't have to be. It's there. It could be used to do some things with. If you feel that, you know, maybe this is the year to do some of that. We need to obligate ARPA by the end of 2024. So, those conversations are we're going to have to really get into early January, you know, first part of the year, I would say.
Yeah, that's only, that's only a year left before you have to really decide what happens with it.
What are the chances we will really be able to evaluate, well, crystal ball, what are the chances in Q1 we can really evaluate a purchase of the solar field? Because if we need to allocate this by '24, by the end of '24, we're going to have to know and make choices in Q1.
You don't have to spend, you have to allocate. So you just have to say, we are saying that this remaining 400,000 is being used for this.
Okay.
You have until the end of '26 to obligate it, to spend it.
Okay.
Yeah. But, but I think we need to start, we need to have those discussions earlier in the year, because there is federal paperwork that I have to do to get it actually obligated or committed. So. But again, you're sitting on some money there that, that could potentially be used.
Whenever we looked at number, at expenses like that, it was always important that they're one-time expenses.
Correct. Absolutely.
And not something reoccurring that you're just going to come back and hit you next year with it. So it doesn't, it makes it a little easier to deal with that one.
And some of the things that maybe would be helpful is to, you know, if you've got loans that are close to being paid off, those are the things I think about, because then that lessens the amount of that transfer from the general fund to the capital. Again, like I said in my memo, and I say it all the time, I'm very cautious about, like you said, we don't want to falsely lower the budget. It's just going to hit us twice next year. So we, you know, we want to be careful about, there's an element of this budget that this is the reality of running the town. And so if you're, we can cover, we can pay some, you know, last payments on loans, we can do that. But, you know, in two years, you're still going to have to buy a dump truck, so you're going to have another loan. There's an element of this is just what the cost is to run the town. And do, in 2024, do you want to have some serious conversations about, are we providing services that we don't need to provide? I don't know that we are. Certainly what we have, people want, and they want more of, they just don't want a higher tax bill, right? So, you know, there's a breaking point at some point. I don't know what that line is. But this is the reality of this budget this year.
You know, when I looked at some of the numbers on it and stuff, and I think I did the math pretty well, what, the emergency services, like you were saying, 180,000 salaries, added up to around 150,000, 160,000 from last year. The increase is because of inflation.
You've got to move closer to your mic.
Your mic, Mike Arnie.
Even we can't hear you.
When I was looking through the budget, I just did some quick calculations to see what was driving it and stuff. And the salary lines, because of inflation, because of the raises, because of everything that it costs to have that many people working. And that alone, without the medical, and the medical seemed like it was actually relatively stable because it went up and down in a few different areas. But the salary lines added up to close to 150,000, somewhere around there.
So, this budget reflects a 2% cost of living and a potential of a 2% additional merit. So it's averaged at 4%. Again, nationwide, it's 8%. The reason we're keeping it low is because health insurance costs did go up. And so that is part of our salary. This is where I have to juggle the two hats, right? I'm an employee that receives the benefits, but I'm also the time manager. So it's, you know, that health insurance is a, it is part of our salary package. It's not just your paycheck, right?
Right.
And it's, and we, and it's a big part. It is a tremendous benefit. And so, you know, we have to give a little over here too to keep that, right? So, our increase is, like I said, 2% cost of living. Police by union, they are at 4%. But they don't have a merit.
Right.
They're flat 4%.
There's so much to be said, because I spent today, my farrier is from Cornish. They're down to a third of their road department because they can't hire anybody.
Correct.
You know, that we're able to fill these positions and not just say, you know, we're going to keep the level at the same and lose people. I mean, Julie has said over and over again, an experienced crew, and it would be incredibly hard to replace that.
Oh, yeah, because I mean, that's, and that is the balance that every town is facing right now, right? Like, you have these departments, our road crew can go private sector and make double what they are making right now. They all know it, believe me. But they like working for the town. We take care of our employees.
And the medical helps.
And the medical helps. It's a tremendous benefit.
The medical is a big benefit.
It's a tremendous benefit. And they're thankful for it. So, it's the balancing act of, government can't afford what private sector can, and anywhere across the plate, right? And how do we juggle that? So...
Want me to speak about medical in this country?
No, you don't need to. We all get it. I'm for Arnie. That being said, the other cost, I will say, the other cost that also took a jump, again, is, in the insurance category, is property. Property insurance, property liability, values, replacement values of property.
Insurance the town has on our property.
And all the buildings and everything.
Correct. Correct. That took, that took a decent jump as well.
There's nothing going down.
There is nothing going down.
And a lot of it, a lot more than the rate of inflation, which is scary, especially when it comes to materials and product, like you were saying, the plow blaze and stuff, double, triple prices and stuff. Jeff was telling about chemicals going up the percentage that they did. Everything's gone.
It is. And there comes a point, I mean, I just, I don't know where that breaking point is, but there's going to come a point where this is not sustainable, not just for Chester, but nationwide. It's just not going to be sustainable. And I don't know where that leaves us. I'm hoping we get to a point where we can level, level off again. I don't believe in level funding. I think it's deficit funding. So it's just not a reality, especially in today. But there are towns that are doing it. They're just going to end up with a deficit at the end of 2024. But...
No, we could, we could level funds. It's just, what do you want to cut? What services do you want to not provide?
Correct. You're going to cut real services. Correct. Sorry. So, we'll wait for the, obviously, we will wait for those surplus numbers to come in from highway. That will have a big impact.
Yeah. But it doesn't, I mean, if you look just at the expense, we're, it's all here in black and white, and everything you've said is true. It's a $500,000 increase. 200,000, or 180 of that is the safety building new payment. And the other 300,000 is incremental increases in all the areas you've described with a few anticipated $10,000 increases to things.
Yeah.
There's no surprises and there's no Easter eggs in here.
No. No. Few things, like I said, if you, one-time things you could pull out, right? I mean, if you took the 42 out of ARPA, and if you took the 50 out of capital, you know, there's nine, you can drop it 100 grand there. Those are one-time things.
Can I ask just one silly question? One thing that I've looked at that I'm sure, it's just because I, this is my first time through this process. There's a capital fund contribution of 32,000 in '24 that we don't have this year.
Where you at?
1112190, bottom of page 5.
32490?
Yeah.
32450? So those are the purchase of your two cruisers? This is the first year there's a payment?
There we go.
2024. It's the first year there's a payment.
You have to go back and forth between the two.
So it's not, it's not new in '24. It's a new payment in '24 for something we already did.
Right.
Correct. We purchased them in '23, first payments in '24. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, a lot of items just drop in and drop out of that hole, depending on what part of the loan we're paying or what, you know, what's going on with it at the time. It's, it's a struggle. I don't know what the answer is, the way we're heading. Property taxes are going to go up, and it's going to hurt people. And sometimes I wonder if we should have a different system as far as property taxes go, so that when you become, and I know they do it in some towns where you hit a certain age or a certain time in life, that they, the increase isn't as much as the other folks would be. So if you're on a fixed thing...
Yeah, there are other states that do that.
Yeah. But that's a whole different conversation for a different time. Even that, I'm not sure is feasible, because then it just puts the burden on the people that are younger or could afford it, or I don't know how you do it and stuff. And another thing is, these budgets that we deal with, is what, one-third of the tax bill? I mean, two-thirds of it is the education budget, which is going to be a struggle this year also, because I've heard some...
So I see GMSU in here, but then there's a whole separate...
So we, we are the collector, we are the collector of the taxes for the school.
But we don't have to see them.
We are the transfer. They come into us and they go out of us. We have nothing to do with their budget. A school has no taxing authority by itself.
On, that, right. So we collect the school taxes?
For them. We have nothing to do with their budget. We have nothing to do with any of that. We are simply the pass-through. That is a nightmare for every municipality.
But when we, when we receive our tax bill, we're paying both of them. So when we're sitting up here obliging people to pay taxes, it's...
It's also for the school.
Both of them, yeah.
Correct.
And we don't collect a small fee for passing that money through?
We are not allowed to. No, sorry. No. It's our civic duty, as the entity that can tax.
That brings up the point that I wanted to raise, and that is communication. We struggle with this every year, every time that something happens within the town. How do we communicate what's happening here right now to the voter, to the people who are actually going to have to pay these taxes and vote on these taxes? And so, again, I'm not sure if there's a fix for the problem. I think a lot of it's due to apathy. People don't care. They like to gripe about the tax bill, but they don't get involved with it.
Yeah.
And again, I think the biggest portion of the tax bill is the education system. And so how do we deal with that as well and get people to get involved in that whole system? So, to quote what everybody else has said, you know, we got an issue and there's no way around it, and we're just going to have to deal with it. But how do we explain it to the taxpayer in a way that they understand and can say, okay, this is what we want as a community, we're going to have to pay for it. If we don't want to pay for it, then we've got to figure out what we're going to cut. And so I'm not sure, because every time it snows, we roll trucks out and salt or plow or do whatever. And if we don't, then people are griping because they can't, you know, ride their bicycle down the road. You know, I don't know how to deal with it. The point is that there's, there's a apathy that just makes people not want to do it. I mean, my eyes glaze over when we're talking about this stuff. But it's important, and I realize that the taxpayer is the one that has to bear the burden, and I'm one of them.
That's right. That's right.
I have a suggestion.
Go ahead. Identify yourself.
This is Jareen Flavinsky.
Mm-hmm.
In communicating with the town, because I've been talking to people, neighbors and citizens of Chester, and they, very few people even know when there's a vote going on, or I've been telling about the select board and how they could listen in and at least understand what the town is doing. But they seem to not understand when the meetings are. Is, and I know when you have the town fair, or the town, you guys put up a sign or you put up a notice so that people know that this weekend you can go to the fair. Is there a way you can do that for these town meetings and especially the town vote when we vote on the budget? So, because the only reason I even knew that there was a vote is because I, we go down past the town hall, and we see this little tiny sign that says, "Vote today." So I just think if you want more people to be aware of what's going on in Chester, we need to at least advertise. I mean, where I came from, that's what we would do. There would be big signs, not just these little tiny signs in front of the town hall, so that you knew that there was a vote going on. And it would be done a couple, two to three weeks before, so that you'd have a chance to know, okay, put that on my calendar, I got to go vote.
We could certainly look at doing a banner. We do advertise. We actually advertise the voting five weeks before, because we're required to by law. It's in our paper of record, it's in the Telegraph, it's, it's kind of all over the place. It's posted all around town. We have those A-frame signs in three locations around town. But, you know, it may be a good idea to have a banner that we hang at the entrance to town. Maybe, maybe that would help people as well. As far as the select board meetings, those are the same thing. Those are posted and published as we're required to do. I think there is also an element of where...
If I may, real quick, to answer Jareen's question?
I think so.
Yeah. So Jareen, if you go to the town website, on the first, the splash page, the page you go to when you go to chester.gov or whatever the address is, all the regularly scheduled meetings are posted there. That includes the select board, the DRV...
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission. And there's a fourth one. I know the Whiting Library is not there, but we meet second Tuesday of every month at the library at 6:00. We're required to warn a minimum of 48 hours before a regular meeting. So there are places where people can go to find the information.
But we also physically post agendas.
Yes.
The post office, at the hardware store, at town hall, at Lee's eyes, at, yeah.
Jareen, I, this is Lee. I think you hit the nail on the head, though. It's neighbor-to-neighbor communication.
Yeah.
So if you tell all your neighbors, hey, go vote, or hey, go listen in to the select board meeting or attend it in person, that's where the actual communication happens. Because you look at a sign once and then you ignore it for the rest of the time it's up there.
Correct, yeah.
But if you're in your neighbor's face saying, go vote, I think that's the best way.
You need to go vote. That's important.
And I appreciate the, the comment, Jareen, because this is one of the things I've been harping on for a while. It's just, communication is very, very difficult, no matter what part of the society you're in. And so coming up with better ideas or, you know, brainstorming about how to do it better is much appreciated.
Yeah.
And there are some of our neighbors who, like you said, do not really, they gripe about the tax increase, but they don't really care. They don't want to know. And they don't even use any of the services. And so it's like, why, you know, you need to speak up if you don't want these services. So I am letting them know, you know, if they, if they're going to complain about the tax bill, then they've got to come to these meetings and voice their opinion.
That's exactly right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jareen.
Exactly right.
And if I may, on a similar subject for Lee's communication, speaking for myself, looking at the town report that's published yearly, to me, that might as well be written in Cyrillic. All those accounting things, it's a foreign language to me. I don't understand them at all. My, I can do calculus. I look at accounting sheets and my brain goes, numbers. So, maybe something that breaks out commitment per capita for services, like what we were talking about with the library, you know? Each taxpayer is paying $35 to fund the library. He's paying so much to fund the EMS. That might help people understand where their tax money is going.
Yeah. Thank you, Matt. That's an interesting idea, especially something for us to keep in mind ahead of March.
It's a good way to break it down, so it's a little more understandable as opposed to...
Yeah.
Three, four million. Okay.
The cup of water instead of the fire hose.
Yeah. Anything else on the general fund budget and capital expense review?
I would just like to go back to the, the solar field. So if we purchase the solar field, I'm just, no, because it's... So if we purchase the solar field, I'm just, no, because it gets to a, it gets to a question, how much does that really lower the rest of our utility bill, or we're still going to have to figure out a utility bill based on paying for the whole thing?
Well, that's kind of what we're in the midst of.
In the midst of.
That you're figuring out now, is that.
But we have anything close?
Uh-huh.
Do you have a ballpark guess?
I need to talk to your, Mike?
Mike, Curtis.
Yeah, Mike Curtis.
The, the main thing.
I'm chuggling all kinds of information to him, and he's kind of doing an analysis for me.
Basically, it comes down to return on investment. How much money is it going to cost, and what are you going to get back, and how it's going to get back? So it's, it's a financial deal.
Well, no.
I mean.
No, no.
It should offset our electric costs. I mean, the electric cost would be towards the payments of whatever bond you do to purchase it, or how you do it, and eventually it would lower it immensely, I think, but I don't know how the details and how that works, and that's why we're trying to get help from people that do understand it, how it works.
Well, and the biggest benefit would be if I could find a funding source that would help us buy it. That's the problem. It's an already-built system, and that's where I'm having issues finding funding.
There's no tax credits.
That solar field, yeah, the taxpayer credits are already been taken, but that solar field has generated almost 750,000, or, sorry, 750 megawatt-hours this year.
Right.
So if you, if you figure out what it is we're using as a town, my guess is the solar field is going to cover most of it, which means that our energy bills go from whatever we're paying for all of our electric bills to almost zero.
Right.
And if there's any excess, we can sell it and generate revenue stream from there. But the reason I laughed, and I saw it, I didn't mean to laugh at you.
No, that's all right, no.
I was laughing because we've been having this discussion for almost two years, and we get nothing from the company that owns it.
Right.
And so.
They don't want to sell.
Yeah, they don't want to sell.
Of course they don't want to sell. They're making money, and the appraised value is.
Right.
So I'm pushing it. This is just.
No, well, you should, see, because if you, if you look at the budget, if that would be something.
That would be a big help.
That would be a big help. And the other thing to think of is, as I look through the budget, which is my bizarre brain, is that the state of Vermont's going to come down with this clean heat thing, and we're going to have to figure a way out of it, you know? And that's going to come and hit us.
Meaning because the town resource is going to have to be, we're going to have to change the way the town does.
Well, things like heating.
Fuel.
Yeah, you know, you're going to try to get it down to, you know, they want it to be carbon neutral, which is, with the road department, that's hard to imagine, but none of our buildings really are even close right now.
Got it.
Any other questions or comments or concerns about the budget? We'll be revisiting this again.
A few times.
And.
Your meeting in January, however, will be some real numbers, you know.
I was all happy, and now I'm depressed.
I'm sorry.
It's just for the holidays.
Imagine looking at it every day and being like, how can I lower this? This is not acceptable number, do I do?
There are some options. We do have some options.
We do have a few options. I mean, but, you know, we're up. Taxes are up.
Next item on the agenda is our local cannabis control commission. We have to appoint.
Tom Dyak.
Tom Dyak. We need to reappoint him for a three-year term that is ending in May of 2026.
Correct.
No, that doesn't seem right.
Three years?
We're appointing him for the three-year, okay, great.
Yeah. Everybody is now a three-year.
Right, you explained that to me.
You're only staggered your first year.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, great.
So Tom served one year and would like to stay on. I've spoken to him. He would like to be appointed, and I would like to appoint him as the cannabis commission chair. And taking one second to update you guys, I anticipate meeting again as a commission in February. There are no new applications within the town of Chester of any type, much less retail. So at this point, we want to stay in existence in case applications come up, or citizens have questions, or issues do come up, but we're keeping it a pretty quiet commission. So we're going to meet to check in, and then we'll meet if something comes up.
Great. Thanks for that update. So you make the motion?
Move to appoint Tom Dyak to the cannabis commission for a three-year term.
Second.
Ariana's the motion, and Lee's the second. Any further discussion on this? I'd like to thank them for volunteering to be part of the commission. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No.
Electric iron.
You know, I didn't make a copy of those notes.
I have them right here.
So there's three of them. The next item on our agenda is to sign our current expense note, and it usually goes in threes. One's the authorization.
You're going to be the note, the resolution, and the tax certificate.
The note, the resolution.
We have to vote on all these?
You could do it all together, because it's not a bond. You can do it all together. You are, this is a current expense note, not a tax anticipation note. It's a current expense note that is tied to the flood outlay from July. We are at 1.9 million. This is basically getting our cash flow back to us. In January, and, sorry, interest rate, which was not as bad as I thought it would be, at 5.4%, nothing compared to what the other notes are doing. But this, we will, through the bond application, we will get as much of this back through the bond as we can, as they will allow. They're limited on how much they have, and of course, every town is going to be applying. So we're going to get as much of this as we can. That bond program has an interest rate of 1.3%. We will pay off as much of this as we possibly can. The rest will be paid off as FEMA starts to reimburse us. We will get this note paid off as quickly as possible. But this is not the tax anticipation note. This is a current expense tied direct to the flood. This is not overspending on top of the town. You know, I just want people to understand that.
It's for cash flow.
It's for cash flow.
And I seem to recall, we asked previously, even the interest on that 5.4% is covered by FEMA?
Can be covered by FEMA, correct. Great. Yeah. Thank you. Okay.
So I'll make a motion with Julie's end.
That's horrible.
To authorize the signing of the current expense note, the resolution, and the tax certificate in the amount of 1.9 million at an interest rate of 5.43%.
This says 5.3. Is that different?
Let me put my glasses on. 5.43. My memo, I must have left the four.
5.43?
5.43. I must have forgot the four in my memo.
So move.
Second.
Lee is the motion, Ariana's the second. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor of approving the note, the resolution, and the tax certificate with a tune of 1.9 million, please say aye.
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 Sorry to be so informal, but I couldn't remember what you said.
It's okay.
Yeah.
You're fine. No worries.
I don't like it.
That's the last page. That's the page.
That's the last one.
But that is the second page of what Lee had. And this is the last page of that one.
They weren't in order.
They weren't.
No, they weren't.
Yes, they.
I just, oh, I know what I said.
You handed me one and two, was that?
Sorry.
It's okay.
You're right.
You're all right. No worries.
Took me half a day to get a car loan. It took like two seconds, 1.9 million.
Yes, it's scary. It's like, oh, my God.
You know, it's interesting that they say the replacement for this is a bond, because they're taking the bond and they're, and they're treating it like, you know, usually a bond is a fixed duration, is fixed interest, that they would call it a bond, but you can pay it back like a short-term loan is like.
You can, yeah, there's a, Vermont passed, Vermont Bond Bank, I'm going to mess this up, I'm sure. The Vermont Bond Bank passed a couple years ago this 10%. They call it the 10% program, where, and I don't know all the details about it, because we don't participate, I don't participate in it.
Yep.
But what they did with this is they, that 10% program, may, normally, you cannot get a bond until you go to the voters and get bond authority.
Right.
In this program, you don't have to do that, because what you are doing is you can only use that money to pay off a short-term note.
Right.
A short-term expense note.
Well, no, well, the thing is, again, well, you can only.
But they're expanding it because of the flood.
Right, but the thing is, and usually in a bond, it's the bond that we, we're going to move this money into a bond, and then we're going to say, hey, it's cool, FEMA paid us, we're just going to pay you off.
Right.
That's usually, out the way the bond works, it's like, we set this up in interest over a period of years.
They want to make the interest.
So let's be clear, right? So that bond, when we, when we take, so say we can get a million of that from the bond, okay? We have seven years to pay that bond.
Right.
You can do that. The bond, you don't have to pay off right away.
Well, that, well, that's.
You can take seven years to repay it. I wouldn't recommend it, but, because let's just pay it with the money we get back from FEMA and be done. But you do have seven years to repay it, even at 1.3, like, why?
That's up.
Like, why? You know, just as the money comes back into our coffers.
Yeah.
Get the loans paid off. But we could, Peter. We do have seven years to repay that if we wanted to.
I don't want to pay in seven years.
No.
I'm just surprised that they're allowing you to pay it off.
Yeah. Yeah, there's no prepayment.
Yeah.
We're doing pretty good with loans and stuff as far as, because our TAN, though, last year, we basically almost didn't have to take anything out for the TAN.